Hi, my name is Frank Emery. I live in Raymond. I also own property in Wyndham, so I get to give you money twice over. One of our founding fathers said this, and I quote, "Facts are stubborn things." That was John Adams. He was one of the signers of the Declaration, also our second president. But today, I went online and in publicschoolreview.com, I found an article that said for 2023 school year, there were six public schools serving 3,127 students in Regional School Unit 14. The district's average testing rank is four tenths. Four tenths, which is the bottom of 50% for public schools in Maine. So this makes me wonder, what happened to learning the ABCs? It seems like it's taking second place through porno books in our school libraries. Gee, no wonder if there's a correlation here. Facts are stubborn things. And U.S. News says that RSU 14 has a 50% proficiency reading for reading and a 40% efficiency for math. Is there a correlation here?
My name is Josh Smeltzer, and I live in Wyndham. So it's unfortunate that public comment was terminated last week. It was nice to have an early evening. But the unfortunate part was that there's a lot of students that were in line to speak and didn't get to speak. And I probably can't ask this of the board, but I'd like to ask this because everybody here is that if you're an adult, step aside for a while, let the kids line up, give them a chance to speak. That way, if we misbehave later, they don't miss their opportunity. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Samantha Patton, and I'm the event director for Power Serve Wyndham. Just want to take a minute and actually just ask everyone on the board as well as here, just take five seconds and smile at your neighbor. Take five seconds, just intentional eye contact and just smile. Power Serve Wyndham is a one-day event. It's a one-day event where we can come together in neutral ground. The students, the faculty, the staff, the community, the town, and we can serve one another. Over hundreds of volunteers. It's April 22nd. It starts at 8:30 in the morning, and it goes until about 1:00. We come together at 8:30 in the morning on neutral ground, regardless of your voices, regardless of race and creed and nationality and anything. It's neutral ground to serve the town. We've got projects. Right now, we have a waiting list for our projects. We need volunteers. For every hundred volunteers, we can do 10 projects in the town of Wyndham in one day. Imagine what impact that makes. Power Serve, you go to powerserve.me and you sign up. You can sign up to honor someone else that has made an impact in your life, has been a light in the darkness. It started in 2016 after a loss of a Wyndham High School student of Shane Donnelly. Shane Donnelly was amazing in spite of what he was going through, in spite of all of everybody's going through. When you smile at one another, the person next to you is going through something. In spite of that, he made sure everyone was seen and was heard. Power Serve is an opportunity where we can all come together and dedicate and honor in someone in your life that made you feel that way. And you can help someone else and pay it forward. You go to powerserve.me. We've got flyers in the back, and you can sign up. We are known nationally right now for what divides us. Imagine what we can do in five hours on what can unite us in common ground. Thank you.
Thank you.
Courtney Edwards, Wyndham, Maine. The book I'm about to read out of is the first 11 pages of the book. It's called Lucky by Alice Sebold. "He started humping me again wildly. The base of my spine was crushed into the ground. Glass cut my back in the behind. He kneeled back. Raise your legs, he said. Spread them, and I did. My legs were like plastic Barbies, flexible. But he wasn't satisfied. He put a hand on each calf and pressed them out further than I could hold. Keep them there, he said. He tried again. He worked his fist and grabbed my breast and twisted my nipples with his fingers and lapped them with his tongue. He began to knead his fist into the opening of my vagina, inserted his fingers into it, three or four at a time. Something tore, and I began to bleed there. I was wet now, and it made him excited. He was intrigued as he worked his whole fist up into my vagina, and he pumped it. He kicked me, and I curled into a ball. I want a blowjob, he said. His dick in his hand. I've never done it before, I said. I'm a virgin. Put it in your mouth. He kneeled before me. I can put my... Can I put my bra back on? I want my clothes. I saw his thighs before me, the way they belled out at the knees, the thick muscles and the black hairs and his flaccid dick. He grabbed my head, put it in his mouth. Put it in your mouth and suck it, he said. Like a straw, I said? Yeah, like a straw. I took it in my hand. It was small, hot, and clammy. It throbbed involuntarily at my touch. He shoved my head forward and put it in. It touched my tongue, and it tasted like dirty rubber or burnt hair. I sucked hard. Not like that, he said, and he brought my head away. Don't you know how to suck a dick? No, I told you, I said. I've never done this before. Bitch, he said, his penis still limp. He held it with two fingers, and he peed on me. Just a little bit, aspirin, wet on my nose and lips. The smell of him, the fruity, heady, nauseating smell clung to my skin. Now, this is the first 11 pages of this book. Now, some students don't get through the books. We understand that. And I've been criticized for coming up here and taking inserts out of books. And I understand that that can be very misleading. And I know books can be rounded out to be, you know, have a great ending. But does this really justify cherry picking? How can this justify cherry picking? You're welcome.
You're out of order. I'm sorry. You're out of order.
Good evening.
We have public comment right now. We're going to listen to a student.
I'm speaking. It's my turn. Thank you. My name is Amelia Greslik. I'm a sophomore at Wyndham High School. Thank you for this opportunity to speak. I didn't really prepare a speech, but I believe our students should speak up and use our voices. We are talking about banning books, banning literature, banning press. Can you see where I'm going? In World War II, they were banning and burning books. They abolished free press. They were scared of the literature that those books contained. The freedom to read is protected by our First Amendment, our freedom to press. So why are we banning... So banning these books is borderline an infringement of our liberties. They are not banning these books for the protection against children. They are afraid of knowledge. As Grace Lynn, an 100-year-old woman who spoke up against the book ban, once said, "Fear is not freedom. Fear is not liberty. Fear is control." Thank you. Thank you.
So hi, my name is Zach Eckland. I'm in Wyndham. So first, I want to address Jeannie. How's your finger feeling? You OK? You feeling OK? Can't acknowledge it? How can we sit here and listen to this child pornography? Right? It's not book banning. Let's be real, guys. It's not book banning. Right? This is removing a book from the school and putting it in the public library. Go ahead. Do it. Right? This isn't book banning. This isn't addressing a First Amendment. This is doing what's right. Chris, right? We have many common friends. In fact, you have three children, correct? Three boys? Your boys were raised respected, right? They're respected within their community. They're respected in their school, in their college, correct? You and your wife raised your kids with morals and standards. All we are asking from you, Chris, you, is to have morals and standards in this community. That's all we are asking for. You guys, this is not conservative, Republican, Democratic, liberal, is irrelevant. This is child pornography. I work for a huge medical company. I read the book when the largest community that we had, meeting we had, asking if this would be appropriate. This is a very liberal company that I work for. Every single one said, "I would be infuriated if my kids brought this home." Guys, we're not asking for much. And I truly understand reading books, ripping books up, having a kid come up here on Fox News isn't the way probably it wasn't settled, right? Right? But the message needs to be heard. And Chris, this falls on you. The blood of our children are on your hands. Your hands, Chris. And I'm not giving up. It doesn't have to happen just at the scoreboard meeting, Chris. I promise you that we will do this together as a community. We will do this as a community. Right? And also... Also, I think we also need to address the action by one of the school member boards walking off the stage last week needs to be addressed to the community. Right? We can't sit there. Again, morals and ethical standards. That's all we're asking for. Stop talking, please. That's all. Is this too much? Is this too much? Guys, for real. Is this too much to ask for? Is it? Do you not think it's embarrassing not to be able to address this, Jeannie? Father to him? You think he would be a great... I'm going to go to St. Anne's on Sunday and read this on Easter Sunday. Do you think this is appropriate to talk about, "I have pussy lined up"? Come on. Kate, you know this is inappropriate. All of you guys know this is not appropriate. Caitlin, right? I talked to one of your great friends, two doors...
Thank you very much. The time is included.
Hi, my name is Stephen Apollatano from Wyndham. Through several emails and public comment, I've asked both our superintendent and chair about what Chris said regarding authority to expedite dangerous materials. This discussion took place in March 2022 before the current IJJ policy was officially revised.
Sir, if this is a complaint about the superintendent...
This was a public comment in Raymond at a school board meeting that I'm talking about. I'm not talking about anything else. This happened publicly. OK? May I have my time back, please?
You were paused.
Thank you. I appreciate that. My comments around... This is what, after several attempts, I got the superintendent to finally answer me. He said, "My comments around expediting were related to materials that would be deemed illegal and immoral in a school library." So our superintendent does not believe the following materials are immoral or dangerous for sixth graders, such as books that include...
Sir, you're verging on a complaint about an employee of RSU 14?
I'm going to talk about what's in the school, in the libraries. So books that include and encourage incest, child molestation, rape, domestic abuse, addictive pornography, underage drinking, unprotected unmarried sex, cocaine use, anal sex, oral sex, excessive profanity, and anti-religion. I recently attended a Bonn Eagle school board meeting. The chair was respectful, knowledgeable, and grateful for public comment. Bonn Eagle just voted to correct a terrible wrong and immediately remove dangerous books pending review. So why not you, Kate? Here in Wyndham, Kate. "When select board members roll their eyes during public comment, parents are antagonized. Board members are allowed to flip off parents, and both Kate and Chris dodge answering emails directly worse than a guy collecting golf balls in a driving range." Kate, I believe you are up for reelection in November. Is that correct? "In January 2022, Jenny Butler violated multiple board code of ethic guidelines." Kate Brick said, "There were no consequences for those violations as they, quote, 'have no teeth.'" "Back in January 2022, I requested Kate to amend the policy so all board members would be held accountable. As the acting chair, you continue to take no action to fix those code of ethic policies. It is obvious, Kate, you want to protect your friend Jenny, and you are in charge of this board, and you control what goes on the agenda. I ask you again to immediately fix this policy." Jenny had publicly posted during an election, quote, "I am committed to supporting RSU 14 and their mission, which is success for all learners." Does that include teaching students how to use the middle finger towards their parents and grandparents? If a faculty member were to flip off a parent or grandparent during work hours, there'd be consequences. If a student flipped off a teacher or a coach, there would be consequences. So why are there no consequences for board members? So much for preaching equality for all." Jenny Butler is an elected school board official and should be held accountable to a higher standard. As they did back in January 2022, I call for Jenny Butler's immediate resignation. Thank you.
Hello. Hi, my name is Lachlan Postvanderburg, and I am a resident and a member of Wyndham High School. As a person who's grown up in Wyndham their entire life, I...
If you could address the board, that would be great.
Oh, sorry. I've lived in Wyndham my entire childhood, and I never thought that all of this would be coming to my own school. I never... I thought, no way this could ever reach my school. I urge everyone to please stop with the hate and the fighting. It's not right. We are all a part of the same community. I wish that we can all leave this auditorium, leaving this behind, and still loving one another and not holding these grudges or saying these horrible things about each other. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Bella, and I live in Wyndham. I'm a student here. I spoke two weeks ago and was met with unkind comments and was constantly interrupted and not treated with the respect that I deserve. The parents wanting to get the book out of the library claimed to want to protect kids, yet I was interrupted and treated with such disrespect. So I feel like they're just hateful. So I'm back today to speak up because I won't be silenced. I would like to make one thing clear. I'm not here to tell anyone that their opinion is wrong or invalid, because it's not. Everyone is entitled to their own opinion. We're all here because we want what's best for the students. So I urge you to listen to us because this decision only affects us, not anyone else. But if we're being honest, this isn't about the students anymore. So many comments have been made against the school, teachers, and libraries. The comment, quote, "The education system has become a joke," end quote, was said at a school board meeting a couple weeks ago. As a student, I'll tell the truth because at school, our teachers work so hard to make everyone feel included and to educate us, and I'm very grateful for all of them. Another comment made was, "This book is saying that rape and incest are OK," end quote. The individual that said this has no idea what they're talking about because these books don't have any rape or incest in them. Everything is consensual, and it's all safe. And so, please, don't...
Ladies and gentlemen, if you'd be respectful to the speaker, that'd be great.
Thank you. So these books are not pornography because they're not meant to stimulate any erotic feelings, like by literal definition, also. Some community members are trying to get certain books off the shelves, but these books all have a common theme of containing topics related to the LGBTQIA+ community. This isn't about books anymore. It's something bigger. It's homophobic and transphobic, and that's just the facts. I'll reiterate what I said two weeks ago. This book isn't being pushed upon any students. It's not in the curriculum, and it's not being distributed to any students. It's on the library shelves for individuals to check out if they wish. If you don't want your child reading it, then you have the right to not let them read it. If you're not comfortable with them reading it, then talk to them and make a note in their file. Don't try and take away this book for everyone. You don't have the right to dictate what I read. My parents have the right to decide what I can and can't do, not you. I strongly believe that finding yourself in a book is important to students. Having this book available for students shows that they're not alone and can relate to a piece of educational literature. Pride flags and gender identity posters make students feel welcome and safe coming to school. They don't feel like they have to hide, like they'll be harassed or assaulted. I know that it's a safe place for them, for all of us to be themselves. So as a student, I'm asking the board to please consider my thoughts and look at the facts. Please do the right thing and keep the book on the shelves. And to everyone else, please be kind. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry. My name's Scott McDonald, and I'm a former Wyndham High School student. It's been said that parents have a choice about what books they want and do not want their children to read. That is simply a pathetic lie. And I'll tell you guys why, or the board why. I was given the book, A True Diary of a Part-Time Indian, as a required reading freshman year. That book talks about God giving you thumbs for masturbation and having sex with trees and other inappropriate stuff. My parents told the school staff they did not want me or my brother reading this book. The school staff completely ignored my parents' request and gave the book to my brother anyway the next following year. My freshman year, I was required to read The Book of Mice and Men. As you know, this book contains words that are completely inappropriate, and I was expelled for using one of the words I learned in an English class. It is pathetic that many inappropriate books are in school, in the school library. It is sad that I was expelled from this very school for a word that the school taught me. I was sad that I could no longer see my friends, attend a school that I once loved. I worked very hard getting back into school, such as community service, bunch of essays that were not accepted. I worked very hard getting back into school after a year. It was clear that this school was no longer here for my schooling needs or me. I think we should be learning how to succeed in life, like learning how to get a job or finding what job fits you best, not learning about sexual things and porn. If you are going to teach about one person's beliefs, you need to teach about everyone's beliefs or not teach about any of them. Porn is not one of those things we need to be learning about. We aren't against the LGBTQIA. We're against the pornographic books in the school library. It doesn't need to be on the mind of an 11-year-old, and it sure as heck doesn't have to be on mine either. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Courtney Postvanderburg, Wyndham resident educator here and youth leader at St. Anne's. I just wanted to share some good news. Al Potter, right up there, was recognized as a Wyndham High School resident of the Maine Principals Award at the banquet in Bangor last Saturday. So congratulations, Al.
Thank you. Who else would like to speak?
Kate Turpin, resident of Wyndham and sponsor of a scholarship. I'd like to speak to you today about the pride flag and provide some education about the symbol of the LGBTQIA+ community. Gilbert Baker, the creator, chose each color of the rainbow flag to represent a different aspect of the queer community, seeing as standards and morals are very important to me and the queer community. Red represents life. We seek to celebrate the lives of LGBT folks and to encourage them to keep living to the fullest. Orange represents healing. In coming together with one another, we are healing from past injustice. Yellow represents new ideas. Green represents nature. It's natural for people to have same-sex attraction and to have gender variance. Blue represents serenity. As little is more meaningful than the ability to feel calm. Violet represents the tide of the spiritual realm. Those with a deep connection to their gender and sexuality can describe such as a spiritual transformation. The updated progress flag incorporates a black and brown stripe to acknowledge the vital roles black and brown people play in queer movements. There is also representation of transgender folks, a white, blue, pink stripe to affirm their community and show awareness for their continued marginalization. I'd like to end with a quote from Baker himself. "Our job as gay people was to come out, to be visible, to live in the truth. As I say, to get out of a lie. Books like Gender Queer and Nick and Charlie help kids live in the truth." Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Ken Clark. And I'm kind of glad we're on this topic of education. Conscience. Con meaning with science, meaning science. I want to know if you guys are making your decisions with conscience or emotions. I'm honestly done with trying to debate whether or not porn is good for kids. It's not. I'm sure there are books talking about the challenges our youth faces with society and their sexuality without the sexually explicit material. If you care about the children, you'll start providing them access to disgusting pornographic books in school. Some parents want their kids to have access to porn. If that's the case, then you can provide the books or home or let them get it on the internet as you so gleefully do when you throw your phones in the air. Or if you really think it's helpful for your child's development, you can surf porn with them, but I wouldn't recommend you tell the police you're doing it. If it's not OK to do in my house, and I don't suggest that you do suggest it's OK in my house, and it's not OK for my children to have access to it in the school. Why? Because it's harmful to their physical, social, and emotional well-being. Period. That's a fact. Use your conscience. My heart breaks for our kids identifying as transgender community, your pawns being told by groomers and ill-informed counselors what you should and should think about doing with your bodies. Our bodies are made up of over 65,000 chromosomes, and those chromosomes either provide you with male or female anatomy. It is possible, and it happens often, where you are a boy and you are attracted to a boy, and girls can be attracted to boys, to girls. Either way, you need to embrace your body and enrich in your mind. America is the greatest and freest country in the United States, and we all should feel blessed to live here. Hundreds and thousands of gay people are successful, get married, and live happy, productive lives. To those of you who are being swept up in this transgender cult and being made to think you're in the wrong body and can change your identity or sexuality day to day and can change your identity or sexuality day to day with confusing pronouns without psychological complications, lighter in life, you are incorrect. And I beg you to do what schools should be teaching you to do, and that's your own research. Anyone tells you not to listen to your parents will create conflict between you and the family. If you want to get educated on what can happen in transgender, I suggest you read this book. David Arthur, he lived through it. I bought a bunch of copies. I gave them to the board. I also left up there that are free for the taking. What I would like to see, and I suggested it a while ago, is that we give our students inspirational books, written in 1937, Think and Grow Rich by Napoleon Hill. One of the most famous quotes he ever said is, "Whatever the mind can conceive and believe, it can achieve." Think about that. Does that not resonate better with you than the porn that we heard earlier? It's amazing. Whatever the mind can conceive and believe, it can achieve. And this is also an individual who talks about sex, and he didn't use porn. In 1937, this is what he said. Guy's a genius. Every-- so my eyes are terrible. Do what I can do here. Every intelligent person knows a stimulation in excess through alcohol, alcohol drink and narcotics is a form of intemperance--
Thank you, sir.
--which destroys the vital--
Appreciate your time.
I just want to say respectfully, Kate, I've asked you questions through email for the last month--
I appreciate your time. Thank you very much.
But you have not answered them. So you're setting a double standard.
Sir, your time is up.
But what about the questions?
Your time is up.
I'm asking for fair respect.
Sir, your time is up.
Yours should be.
Hi, my name is Leitha Allen, and I'm a lifelong Wyndham resident. First, I'd like to thank the school board educators and faculty of RSU14. More often than not, your job is thankless and exhausting. You spend more time some days with these children than their own parents do. You support, encourage, hold accountable, mediate, and counsel these children, all while educating and getting paid peanuts to do so. The last several meetings, words like disgusting, gross, inappropriate, and deplorable have been thrown out describing the books being challenged. At the meeting on March 22, there was a speaker who does not live in the district, does not have children in the district, and does not pay taxes in the district, named David Arthur Kendall. I didn't know it at the time, and I'm sure few other people did as well, but he is a lifetime registrant on the Sex Offender Registry because of the crimes he was convicted of that involved a child or children under the age of 14. Let's talk about inappropriate, gross, deplorable. This man was invited by members of the community to speak at a meeting in a school with minor children present. I do not understand why we are wasting everyone's time debating about what some deem as inappropriate literature, that you could easily restrict your child from checking out, but it's no problem. It's absolutely okay to invite an actual child predator, a convicted child predator, to a school with minor children present. Finally, I think every single person here can agree on at least one thing: Parenting is freaking hard. I go out on a limb and say it's the hardest thing some of us will ever have to do. I know so far for me it has been. But with parenting comes the hard, uncomfortable conversations. I wonder how many parents have sat down with their children to ask their opinions on these books. Do they even care? Is it even something that crosses their mind? And are we having these debates week in and week out when it's something our kids could care less about? Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Doris Meehan. I'm from Wyndham. The question, after coming to these school board meetings and hearing the readings, the question that keeps coming to my mind is why? Why does anyone think it's important for teens to hear how a sexual partner can attempt to stretch female anatomy and insert a fist? Why is it important to expose children to a book that gives them a URL for a bona fide raw porn site? Why do we need to have books in school libraries that spell out what it is like to watch your dad rape your sibling, and how it feels to be raped by him before year 10? Why do teens need to read about sex in descriptive terms that are so vivid that some adults are muting their TVs when those books are read at a school board meeting? I have some thoughts on why. Are our children being indoctrinated and groomed and desensitized by a national movement that wants them, when adults, to accept aberrant and abhorrent behavior? Is the goal a citizenry that will no longer use the term pedophile, but replace that with a minor attracted person? I think the answer is yes. This national movement wants people to accept and abide by the beliefs of organizations such as NAMBLA, the North American Man-Boy Love Association, a pedophile group that advocates adult sexual behavior with male children and wants the age of consent for sex between adults and children to disappear. It wants pornography to be just normal. Some claim that these books benefit the LGBT students, but there have been at least three adults from the LGBT community, all aged beyond full brain development, who have testified at this microphone that that is absolutely not true. And those speakers have informed you how harmful exposure to this filth is to young brains and hearts. I say let's allow RSU14 to be a leader in protecting, not harming, our young people.
Thank you.
My name is NJ Boltman, and I am a transgender student at WHS. Today, I would like to read a poem written by a pastor during the time of Nazi Germany. The poem is called "First They Came." First they came for the communists, and I did not speak out because I was not a communist. Then they came for the socialists, and I did not speak out because I was not a socialist. Then they came for the trade unionists, and I did not speak out because I was not a trade unionist. Then they came for the Jews, and I did not speak out because I was not a Jew. Then they came for me, and there was no one left to speak out for me. No matter what side you believe, it is hard to miss the meaning of this poem. For those who can't see it, I won't bother explaining. It is not my job to educate you. And I have learned that no matter how many facts and statistics you present to someone, it will not change a mind that has already been made up. And unlike some people in this room, I am not here to try and convince you of my beliefs. My community is currently facing genocide in this country, and no, that is not an exaggeration. I am 16 years old, and I am fighting for my life and for my right to exist. I attend protests, write to representatives, and beg the people around me to do the same. Then I come to school, where I am barked at, yelled at, and called slurs on a daily basis. The only thing that makes it worth it is my teachers, who support me and encourage me in the things I am passionate about. I don't want to have to be doing this, but I don't have a choice. Unlike the poem, I am speaking out for the ones under attack. I am speaking out for the children and teens who don't have supportive parents. I am speaking out for my peers who don't have the option to voice their truth. And I am speaking out for myself, because not many other people will. Our teachers are not indoctrinating us. They are not pushing their own beliefs on us. They are only here to help us learn. Representations of consent, of real-life experiences that are intended to be educational rather than erotic are not porn. Gender Queer and other books like it are not porn. And although some in this room scream and yell about pornography, indoctrination, and grooming, I stand before you, calm, respectful, collected, with a simple message. My voice may tremble and my hands may shake, but I will not be silenced by fear. My existence cannot be silenced. My existence in books, in media, and in life is not a threat. The existence and representation of LGBTQ+ people does not turn your children gay or trans. Representation of LGBTQ+ people does not make your children have sex. Please do not perpetuate these ideologies of hate by banning books with LGBTQ+ characters. Members of the board, please let my school be a place where I can learn, not a place where I have to fight for my right to exist. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Dani Davis, and I'm from Wyndham. And I would like to finish where I left off last week. We know the award committee information was withheld, and I say this all because we also know on the book challenge committee, a member previously expressed they believe the book belongs in the library. The policy states the committee should generally be neutral. How can we trust the book challenge committee selection process? The RSU14 IJJ processes a failure, and I'm worried the direction the district is going in and the future for its young kids when ethics and integrity don't seem to be factoring in anymore. When leadership will turn a blind eye on child sexual abuse and lacks integrity and ethics, how can we trust that our children are being put first? And I want to pivot now, and I think it's great to follow Doris. I want to pivot to the fact that our schools are being indoctrinated, and there's an agenda to push child sexualization, gender studies, and critical race theory in our schools and on our youth. It can be disguised as inclusion, tolerance, diversity, in the social-emotional learning curriculum. Some books that have been read are a clear example of child sexualization and some of gender studies. SEL does encompass some good stuff, but no matter the size of the portion of the bad, it always outweighs the good. All good or nothing. Some staff, you know, they just put their heads down and keep quiet so they can stay for the kids, and others have already left because of the new requirements. But what if we don't change the leadership in RSU14? Leaders will continue to implement child sexualization and gender studies through the social-emotional learning curriculum. Is it because they are pro-child sexualization? Is it because they care more about the funding they receive than they do the kids? Because they do receive funds for implementing the agenda through social-emotional learning. And as part of the research and development of SEL, they pump invasive, inappropriate, and irrelevant surveys to our children, asking things such as, "Which of the following best describes you?" Choices are heterosexual, gay or lesbian, bisexual, "I described my sexual identity some other way," "I'm not sure about my identity," questioning, "I don't know what this question is asking." Others include, "How old were you when you had sex for the first time during your life? With whom have you had sexual contact? Have you had oral sex? The last time you had sexual intercourse, how many years younger or older than you was your partner during your life? With how many people have you had sexual intercourse during the last three months? During the last three months, how many people did you have sexual intercourse with? Did you drink alcohol or use drugs before you had sexual intercourse the last time?" Are these surveys truly being sold to curriculum creators? What do these topics have to do with the academic curriculum? We need new leaders who will not allow the agenda which pushes child sexualization and gender studies in our schools. And I just want to thank everybody for being here and listening.
Thank you.
Hi, Kristin Day from Wyndham. Districts around Maine are engaged in a culture war concerning the standard of decency expected for kids in our school. When the battle comes to the doorstep of districts, those in power seem to be addressing the battles one of two ways: ethically, respectful of citizens' concerns, or by digging their heels in to defend the status quo at all cost. Some superintendents have reacted by removing all books in question from circulation while they're reviewed. And this week, the Bonny Eagle Board moved to do the same. RSU14, however, has opted to approach this community concerned with reticence or obstinance, acting to defend the status quo at all cost. We've asked for workshops for years for the books to be removed while being reviewed, and no good-faith responses have come from RSU14. The board did agree to review IJJ, but that was likely meant to slow momentum and to be an attempt to regain the narrative while appearing to be hearing us. I know Drummond-Woodson will make sure the IJJ revision works for the district and doesn't slow down their agenda. I know facts don't care about our feelings, but I will never understand how people in authority can act with such brazen disregard of ethics when our kids are concerned. But I think it has to do with the type of people attracted to positions of power. I'm not going to ask how you justify this approach because I've lived it, and I know you don't justify anything. You act on the legal bare minimum. I just don't think, as awareness spreads and voters weigh in, that it's going to fly. Thank you, Kate, for your response this afternoon regarding my FOAA request about your Board of Directors' self-evaluations under policy BBAB dating back to 2019. For anyone unfamiliar, that policy states, "An elected body, the board, is accountable to the public for the education of its children and the stewardship of the school district's resources." That sounds so good to me, and I'm guessing your lawyers are going to want to button that one up next. Considering the past accusations in the district, code of conduct violations for board member, and the recent escalation during public input, I believe this information is relevant to understand the direction this board has taken and where we can expect it to go next.
Thank you.
Sup, guys. My name is Ewan O'Shea. How's it going? I'm from Wyndham. So, a skilled author is always proficient at sending a message. A great example of this is Night by Ellie Weizel, which I read in the eighth grade last year. Don't mind if I butchered that name. I'm sorry. I apologize. For those who don't know, Night is a memoir recounting Ellie's personal experience of the events of the Holocaust. It sheds light on the event, and it establishes the fact that the Holocaust existed very well, so we do not repeat it again. Books like these, ones with mature, heavy topics, are tangible reminders that these things have happened and can happen in the future. The same goes with the books discussed here. They are not written to corrupt our minds and force us to replicate the behavior depicted in the book. They are written to do the exact opposite. These books are here to give us wisdom, to grab our hearts and make us recognize and sympathize with the people within those pages. They do not make us wish to replicate that behavior because our parents already know how to teach us what morality is, what is right and what is wrong, what is and isn't acceptable. Your job as adults is to give us your wisdom through experience, personal or not. Our job as kids, as students, is to offer different perspectives that you may not have thought of or considered, given the rapidly changing world we are growing up in. If you refuse to give us this wisdom we not only want but also deserve, then we will find it elsewhere, and there is very little that you can do to stop us.
Thank you.
Hi. Tanya Brown, Wyndham. Has RSU14's library strayed from its mission to develop critical thinkers to RSU14 Library Media, exposing sexually explicit material to adolescents and normalizing sexual experimentation in minors? Britannica defines pornography as "representation of sexual behavior in books, pictures, statutes, films, and other media that is intended to cause sexual excitement." There is a difference between intentions and another person's perception or experience, and both can be valid. PubMed published a study in 2020 showing sexually explicit media exposure during early adolescence predicted early sexual debut, unsafe sex, multiple sexual partners, and risky sexual behavior, which also had a significant relationship with risky sexual behavior in the emerging adulthood. A study from Psychology Today reported boys who were exposed to sexually explicit media were three times more likely to engage in oral sex and intercourse two years after exposure than non-exposed boys. Young girls exposed to sexual content in the media were twice as likely to engage in oral sex and one and a half times more likely to have intercourse. Research shows that children who have sex by the age of 13 are more likely to have multiple sexual partners, engage in frequent intercourse, have unprotected sex, and use drugs or alcohol before sex. A study by Dr. Jennings Bryant more than 66% of boys and 40% of girls reported wanting to try something, some of the sexual behaviors they saw in the media, and by high school, many had done so, which increases the risk of sexually transmitted diseases and unwanted pregnancies. Not every child who is exposed to sexual content will struggle with a mental health disorder, but research shows that early exposure to pornography is a risk factor for sex addictions and other intimacy disorders. According to some studies, early exposure by age 14 to pornography and other explicit material may increase the risk of a child becoming a victim of sexual violence or acting out sexually against another child. This is not an inclusion issue or a debate. This is a real community concern on what the long-term effects may be if RSU14 continues exposing sexually explicit materials to adolescents and normalizing sexual experimentation in minors. It is disappointing to come here almost two years later and see that we still don't have any code of ethics being enforced, and that Jenny Butler has been allowed to flip the bird to parents and students without any consequences. Isn't it time that we start building a bridge, acknowledge the concerns of the families in the community who care enough to show up week after week? Thank you.
Thank you.
Evening. Louis Salet, Wyndham, parent of first grader. So, coming fresh off of two bans on Facebook groups, that's ought to take away my First Amendment rights, so I'm going to be a regular here, apparently. I want to bring up a quote from George Santiana in The Life of Reason, 1905. His quote is saying, "Those who cannot remember the past are condemned to repeat it." And I think that's why a lot of us parents are up here this evening, at least from my side of the aisle, in that we are trying to prevent what happened in Germany in the 1930s. As I illustrated in my first public comment about the 20,000 books burned in the center of Berlin, it is very easily for society to slip back into those habits. So I implore the board to please not give in to the bullying and harassment, and stay the course, and be a safe space for students to be educated and express themselves. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is April O'Shea. I'm a resident of Wyndham. I'm an out of a transgender kid. I want to thank the board for listening to everyone's concerns on the issue. Our community is divided by what is deemed offensive. I find gun violence offensive. I find homelessness, misinformation offensive. I do not find human anatomy offensive, and I do not find sex offensive. Oh, hey. The religious stigma over sex in our bodies must stop. Our teens are having sex. Statistics say between 30% to 70%, depending on the high school grade level. I believe in providing our high schoolers with salient information about sex education and relationships that helps them make sound decisions and keeps them safe. The argument to ban books like Gender Queer that was pointed out here, that several pages in the book were considered pornographic by people, even though we've established that the author's intent wasn't to titillate or-- we could use the same lens to look at a book like the Bible, perhaps. I could cite verse after verse about murder, rape, incest, sodomy, but I'm sure I would be just told that I'm cherry picking the bad stuff out of that. I couldn't bring up the Crusades, or the Inquisition, or the witch hysteria of the 17th century New England, all brought to you by the Bible. And make no mistakes-- And make no mistakes, we are in the middle of a modern-day witch hunt perpetrated against some of the LGBTQ community, right down to the boogeyman in the bathroom argument that has been used in this auditorium. "The authors of this constitution believed that political liberty was meaningless without religious liberty. The Establishment Clause states that Congress shall make no law regarding the establishment of religion, yet religion is infecting our government, rolling back progress made toward equal protection under the law for all. One cannot pursue life, liberty, and happiness when one subset of the population is dictating what is appropriate and illegal, and yet it's happening more every day. A public school that caters to the demands of the citizens who base their grievances on religious dogma should be in violation of the Constitution. Please don't conflate religion and morality, as they are not always on the same page." Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Landon Severino. I'm a resident of Sebago, but I do have a son at Wyndham Primary. I'm going to read from the book House of Sky and Breath. It's in the high school. I believe there's 14-year-olds in high school. I was 14 when I was in high school. "Let me see your face," he breathed, sliding a hand between her legs. "Never," she said, and Ruin didn't care. Not as his fingers slicked through her soaked sex, utterly ready for him. He spread her knees and knelt between them, dragged his tongue up her center. He bucked, like his cock had a mind of its own, like it needed to be in her, or it was going to fucking erupt right there. Ruin fisted himself, pumping slowly as he licked her again. He slipped a finger into her, finding her mind melting. "Please," she said, and he hissed as her fingers wrapped around his cock and guided him to her entrance. I just can't even fathom the discussion that we're having. What did I just read? It's just not for public school, and if you want to read it outside of school, then that is between you and your parents? But this is a public school. This is children. I can't even fathom that this is an argument right now. And my heart hurts for anybody here who feels like they're not being represented, but that's porn. Fisting and bucking, and that is just straight porn. There's no other way around it. Please listen to us, parents who are... I'm shaking just reading it. We're concerned. It's concerning.
Thank you.
I'm Jennifer White. I own a Joyful Noise Christian daycare and learning center here in town, and I have to say I'm just totally disgusted, totally disgusted. I cannot believe that we have come here, week after week after week, when Bonnie Eagle can have a meeting, and they can make a decision and remove 10 books like that, and remove them and ask the superintendent to review them. I think that is much more efficient. So, this whole IJJ thing, in my opinion, is a stall tactic, okay? I am asking Mr. Howell that you will intercede in this, and that you will remove the books in question, and you personally will review them. As the superintendent, you will read every single one of those books, every one of them. That's not asking too much. I know you're busy. I know you have a lot on your plate, but that is your responsibility. These parents are asking you to do that. And you know, I notice Board members have mentioned many times about making the school a safe place for all students and doing what is right for all students, correct? I'm curious as to what the definition of that looks like to the Board. Are school board members and school staff treating students who don't agree with certain ideologies or inappropriate materials in the same respectful manner? Personal reflection on that. I'd have to say no. That is an honest question. Every one of the district's children should be treated with the same dignity and respect, not cherry picking. Unfortunately, there is an underlying tone of this showing through to the community at large. It is inappropriate to force children to use learning materials at school that go against their conscience and expose them to topics that they consider immoral or they are not mentally ready for. Not every child is having sex, okay? Not every family is raising their child to read this crap, and it is crap. I know a lot of families that do not stand for this. They don't bring it into their homes. They don't allow their kids to read it. And you know, I applaud them for that. Why are they being discriminated against? Are those children given respectful and thoughtful consideration in all of this? We've heard from one group of children tonight, and I applaud them for their courage to stand up and talk. It's important to hear all sides, okay? We, as parents, we're all standing up here for the children in our community that are too afraid to come up here and talk. And believe me, there's a lot of them. If so, how is the Board prepared to act in a non-discriminatory manner? I'd like to know that.
Hi. My name's Lynn Butterfield from Raymond. There's really only one thing that should be done right now, that is remove all books in question from the library, and that includes the ones you don't even know about yet. Form a committee. This committee should consist of four or five adult community members and four or five staff members, and not the librarians. Those are the ones that put the books in the library to begin with. Both sides need to be unbiased and be able to compromise and hear both sides. This committee will pick one book, and everyone reads or listens to that book. Each week or two, do a Zoom meeting or an actual meeting with committee members, whichever is easiest for everyone. Discuss the book and vote on whether it stays or goes. On to the next book. I literally just laid that out for you. Your job is done. The IJJ policy is not being followed except when it's convenient, nor is it effective or complete to continue with that process. This policy needs to either be edited or rewritten entirely. Until that is done, the committee does the work on the book issues that gives the community input, as well as no one... So that way, no one feels left out, and everybody has their input on the books. This idea has been repeated several times, and yet here we are again. We are going to keep coming to these meetings, and I'm sure we all want to stop talking about it, but yet here we are still. It's common sense. Just give us the ability to work together, get past this part, and it's really okay to ask for help. This is a huge undertaking. And Jenny Butler, please submit your resignation.
Hello. I'm DJ Butterfield from Jordan Small Middle School, and honestly, why are we arguing over a book? And I get books are... Honestly, I don't like reading. And why would I read a pornography book, go out of my way to check it out and ask? And just ask for all that? Why? I have an iPad, a phone, whatever. But the point is, why are you giving these out to kids? They're kids. They're kids. Let their parents teach them or something, like tell them, not the teachers. It's ridiculous.
Good evening, Board members. My name is Ashlyn Cuthbert. First, ma'am, would you like to record this? Because it's important for both sides to be recorded.
If you would please just address the Board, that would be great.
My name is Ashlyn Cuthbert, and I'm an eighth grader at Wyndham Middle School. There are too many books on the list in question. That's too many stories that never get to be told. That's too many stories that never get to be heard, and that's too many stories that never get to save a life. I cannot express how much teenagers need books. When students enter middle school, they are thrown into a world that only sees their social status and nothing more. When the people around you don't even try to understand your journey, your experiences, your feelings, your intelligence, or anything that truly makes you you, feeling alone just comes with a territory. It's made even worse with social media, where the only thing people are judging you by is how many likes and comments you get. This continues up through high school and even into college. Books that share a similar story to your own greatly diminishes that alone feeling, that feeling that you can scream and no one will hear, that feeling that presses in on you, suffocating you at every turn, that feeling that if you kill yourself, no one will care. When students read, hear, or watch a story that they can relate to, they can say, "Oh, wait, they do hear me." Depriving these students of resources that can save their lives shouldn't even be argued. If a student or a parent wants to stop reading a book because it makes them feel uncomfortable, that is a total choice that they can make, and I encourage it. If that's your choice, by all means, please do so. But you cannot make decisions for everyone. I welcome different opinions and points of view in my world, but where I draw the line is when someone forces their opinion on others and doesn't listen to or consider the other side. These students are what these schools are for. These are the people on the receiving end of these remarks, policies, and decisions. I really don't know what else to say, aside from, please allow students to be your main priority, because in the end, that's who this decision is affecting. Not parents, not community members, but students. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak?
Sarah, it's your turn to speak. You have three minutes. We're going to start the timer here.
I'm Justin Whynot from Wyndham. This Board has become a public mockery. You are elected officials that represent the town. You are leaders of the community, and you are leading us in the wrong direction. This school used to promote self-care. Now you promote self-harm. This school used to teach science. Now you embrace delusional behavior. This school used to teach children how to stay safe. Now you groom children to be victims of child abuse. This school used to teach health class. Now you promote bestiality. This school used to teach anti-bullying. Now you have clubs to harass students who want no part of your delusions. This school used to inspire parents to be part of a child's education. Now you promote incest. This school used to be a shining light of education. Now you promote rape. This school used to coach athletes. Now you coach student advocates so you can molest the minds of children. This Board has become corrupt and sinister in behavior. Some members of this Board flaunt their shamefully pushed destructive behavior and conduct themselves with a lack of morals and ethics. This demeaning, immoral actions demand no less than you stepping down. So, Jeannie Butler, Kate Briggs, and Christopher Howell, I ask for your resignation.
I'm not asking for your resignation. I wouldn't want your job. Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Crystal Ash Cuthbert. I live here in Wyndham. Several weeks now, at school board meetings, members of our community are suggesting the Bibles be passed out to students in our school system, and I just want to remind the Board that the First Clause of the United States Constitution says that "Congress shall make no laws respecting any established religion." The idea that government agencies should remain neutral toward all religions and not officially recognize or favor any one religion was a cornerstone of our forefathers as they embarked on a new form of government over 220 years ago. While it became quite obvious over the last several weeks with public comments about Bibles in bathrooms, that underlying fears are much more than about books. The Second Amendment of the Library Bill of Rights states that libraries should provide materials and information presenting all viewpoints on current and historical issues. Materials should not be prescribed or removed because of partisan or doctrinal disapproval, excuse me. Additionally, the hypocrisy of suggesting that all students need to be protected and cared for while at the same time encouraging our citizens to vote down the school budget is beyond belief. Not giving our schools the funds needed to adequately educate children is horrifying. I will be voting for this year's school budget because that is what's in the best interest of our community, and I ask all the citizens of Wyndham and Raymond to do the same. I will remind the Board that this school district has two policies in place that address parental concerns brought forward over the past several months. The first one defines how to formally challenge the appropriateness of a book. The second one allows any parent to opt out of their own child reading a particular book based on their family's religious, personal, or moral beliefs. These policies must continue to be followed. As Jody Picalt says, "There's absolutely nothing wrong with a parent deciding a certain book is not right for their child, but there is a colossal problem with a parent deciding that no child should be allowed to read a book." Thank you for your time to share my thoughts and your anticipated consideration of them.
Thank you.
My name is Kaylee Vossman, and I'm a resident of Wyndham, and I have a 14-year-old who attends the high school. I would just like to remind you all that I was not allowed to opt out, as I had no idea any of these books were in the middle school or high school library. I addressed that weeks ago, and no one's said anything about it ever since, so I want to know how all these books got into our schools during COVID when we were closed, and no, no one knew about it, including you guys. Also, just because material that's inappropriate or offensive, or whether it be pornographic or drug, doesn't mean... Just because it's available doesn't mean you just hand it over to children. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Pat Patterson, Dr. Pat Patterson. I've been a pediatrician and adolescent provider for 35 years now, and this is a very, very challenging subject, and I want to thank the Board, the teachers. I want to thank administration. I want to thank the parents that care so deeply for their kids on both sides of the So, it's been hard to listen to, but I hope, and I do feel as a resident of Wyndham for over 30 years, that we will find a way forward through this. I just want to remind the Board, for those that are not aware, that the age of onset of puberty has been going earlier, younger and younger for decades now. So that, at this point, a girl can enter puberty at age eight with the development of... Beginning development of breast tissue, and that is considered normal. A boy, nine years of age. So, when we talk about when these books might be appropriate, we need to kind of think developmentally as opposed to specific ages, I think, or what schools they attend. I think it's important to be aware of what developmental stage these kids are in nowadays, and much earlier than maybe, certainly when I went through it. I also want to remind that the period of adolescence is a very tumultuous period, as I'm sure you all know, and there's lots of very sensitive, very awkward situations that the adolescents face, that they don't always feel completely comfortable talking to parents, although it's strongly encouraged, and I hope that everybody's home is working towards that end, to have an open conversation with your kids, and ongoing, not sort of a one-talk-and-done. What we know, and this is from the main Integrated Youth Health Survey that's done every other year, from the 1921 survey, that 28% of high school students, when they felt... When they checked off the box, "Have you felt sad for two or more weeks?", and they said yes, and then the next question is, "If you talked to someone, who did you talk to about this?" So, if they talked to someone, and only about a quarter of them said it was a parent. That's not reflective of the kinds of homes these children and adolescents in Cumberland County are coming from. It's also very much reflective of their comfort level with coming to a parent. It is that way, and we can do everything we can. You may have the strongest lines of communications and support in your homes, but they don't come to you. So, where does that student go? Where does that... Where does that adolescent go when they have
Thank you very much.
situations? Sorry.
Just wait. Can I go? Good afternoon, evening. My name is Tammy Yates. I'm a resident of Wyndham, excuse me, Raymond. Obviously, I'm nervous. My oldest child is transgender. Has been for 10 years. Was born a female, transitioned to male, also detransitioned. And here's a hard fact. Pornography in any book, whether it's an adult book meant for my mind or for my child, is too explicit. I am not asking you to remove books that help people like my daughter. They need to be heard. They have a voice. The suicide rates are astronomical. However, the topics that have been discussed here would not have helped. They would have been explicit. Now, I am not saying don't help. You better help, because they're not going anywhere. They have a voice. We have a voice. We all have a voice. And what you do not and are not prepared for is to be at the head of this locomotive where both medical science and psychologists are in disagreement of what is right for the age level and for the people going through these experiences. I grew up secondary exposed to pornography at four years old. By the time I was 12, I was exposed to pornography again, creating in me an illicit appetite for sexual pornography. I was a teenage mother. I was hated by my community because my child was biracial in a southern community. We all have a voice. Nazi Germany proved that not just one type of people was killed, but many people of opposing ideas were killed. Many people were eradicated. I want my voice to matter in my school district. I want their voice to matter in the school district, because we have to become one in school. Not a laboratory, not an experiment. Don't cancel the voices. Find the middle ground. There are books. There will be books to represent all people and to represent the fact that I don't want my child to be secondary exposed to illicit pornographic material that, as I'm sitting here as an adult, create images in my head. Why? Because we are all visual human beings. And I can't tell you, and I'm sure if you talk to any psychologist, it would start with, when I was a teenager, somebody had a porn under their bed. Somebody let me watch porn. Porn is a drug. If you do not believe me, there are movements all across the world, Fight the New Drug, Brain on Porn. However, people who are identifying different than I have a right to a voice, and I hope you give them that, but I also hope you hear all of us, because we are all here today. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
My name is Scott McLean. I'm glad that woman actually just beat me to the microphone, because she kind of took some of my thunder, but I've been off the board for five months. This is a real mess you guys got here. I think that, to her point, we can find some common ground. The answer is not to have pornography in our schools. But if we are not going to legally be able to remove this stuff from our libraries, I think what I'm hearing is the majority of the parents that are up here right now, they are extremely upset because they're not being involved with the decision-making process. And if they're, and I know that I have sent this to you all in an email, and I'm going to go ahead and share it publicly, we all have infinite campus. Everything is linked. I know when my daughter is five minutes late for school because she decided to pull into a Roma Joe's on the way in. I know when she's missing an assignment. I know when she gets a good grade. I know when she gets a bad grade. Why can't I know when she takes out a library book? Because right there is where the conversation now starts. Because I see those notifications. I get 60 of them a day. I see those notifications. We sit down at the dinner table. We talk. And I ask her questions about her day and how her day went. And when I see something controversial come up, such as a library book, we will have a private family conversation about it, and we will determine the best course of action with her thought process in mind. And you guys have completely eliminated the parents from this equation, and that's what needs to be addressed. I can say that my six years sitting up there where you guys are right now, I learned a lot. I learned that you're not as powerful as you, as some of you may think. There's, you have to operate within the confines of federal and state regulations. And that is absolutely where we need to start fighting, is we need to start fighting with federal and state legislators to try and get some of these vague policies and procedures closed up. Thank you very much for your time. I'm going to have a drink.
Hello. I have nothing prepared, so I'm winging it. I'm Kim Neal. I'm from Wyndham. I have four kids in the school system. I've just been coming to these meetings and listening and just taking it all in, and I have to agree with everything that my beautiful friend Tammy just said when she came up here a minute ago. Completely agree with her 100%. And I have to say, listening to some of the books that Courtney, that Courtney has read the last couple of meetings, have made me 1,000 times more uncomfortable than the book Gender Queer. So I feel like the whole division of the queer community and whatever, it's, it's, it's not, it's not about that. It is about what is appropriate for children. Would you sit and read these books in your church, in your workplace, at your family table? I'm sitting next to my teenagers, and I'm cringing, and I just want to like crawl into a hole because it makes me so uncomfortable. And a lot of the books have been very triggering. So I just feel like it's a common sense thing at this point. Like, they're not appropriate. They should be reviewed. They should be pulled from the shelves immediately. And I have to again say, like, nobody is trying to ban books. We don't want to burn the books. We don't want to cancel the books. We just want to relocate the books to the public library. You can walk through the path from the school and get to the public library and check those books out. And we don't want to take any resources away from any community or any student. Every student should have what they need. So that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak? Okay. I guess that.
Beth Hawke from Wyndham. Bonnie Eagle has taken a stand. I ask repeatedly for Wyndham to be the model. Please be the model for the state. Put us on the map, the direction that we needed to be in. A respectful generation for our children. Bonnie Eagle took the high road, and now we can't lead them. We have to follow. So at least we have that opportunity, and that's what we should do. Thank you.
Hi, Sherry Clark from Raymond. I think, from my perspective, we're missing the root of this whole issue. And again, it comes down to family. Family is the word that this is all about, because if we as families, and I'm 10 fingers here, I've got nine grandchildren, and four of them are RS214, but as families, we should be doing part of what the school, or the government, or whatever you want to say, is doing, I guess. But what I would see as a middle ground here, this is just kind of observing what's been said, you know, tonight and many of the other nights that I've been here, is how can we empower families? I understand you're doing your job, and I appreciate that. You know, you are doing what you are called to do as educators or on the board. But as families, what are we called to do? And how can we work together as an educational system and as families? Not opposing each other, not dividing, you know, us from each other, but how can we work together? I'm sure there's a way if we want to do that, and I believe we do. I believe the majority of people, everyone here, really does want to work together. And I would just say, let's try to explore how we can do that, but specifically respecting families as well as respecting our educators. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, everyone. My name is Jen Greslick. I'm a resident of Wyndham. I've been a parent of Wyndham kids for, gosh, my oldest is 24, so that might make some of you feel old. You remember Mary. And my youngest is a sophomore. I wasn't planning on speaking. I came here just to support the kids, which I feel like they needed because they've been heckled and called names and even bullied at school because they chose to speak up to their school board. And so I really do applaud them, and I know we're not supposed to talk to the public, but what made me come up is I just want to, it was a comment that was made, and I don't think there was any nefarious intent behind the comment, but I want to remind the school board that it's a nice thought that we take these books and we just put them in the public library. We're not asking to get rid of them. But accessibility is an issue for a lot of kids. A lot of kids don't have an opportunity to go to the public library. They have, you know, they have busing, and that gets them to school and home from school. They don't have an opportunity. If these books only existed in the public library, how would they get to them? The kids that need them, the kids that are lost, who are looking for, you know, that book that makes them feel less alone. If they only exist in the public library, public school kids won't necessarily have access to them. And I realize that's part of the point for some of these people, but accessibility, I urge you, when you're thinking about these issues, to consider the accessibility for some students and how that can really be an issue for them to find these books. So thank you very much for your time. Oh, and I just want to say thank you very much for all that you've done with this and all that you've done for my children. I think Wyndham's a great place to live. Thanks.
Thank you.
Rob Hanson, live in Standish, own property in Wyndham, have a nephew at Wyndham Schools. I think the amount of courage it takes for these kids to come up here is immense, okay? Everybody gets nervous. But I just want to point out that there's a lot of kids in the high school, and you don't hear any of them coming with an opposing viewpoint to what you've heard from the kids. If they did, they would catch hell, right? There are things that you can and can't say. And I just think that the student input's great, but you would have to believe that the students feel 100% the same way, and they don't. But they can't come and say their piece because they're afraid to. And I just hope you consider that.
Thank you. I see a student coming down. Do you mind pausing for a minute? Is it all right? Okay, go ahead.
Hi, my name's Justin from Wyndham.
Justin, what's your last name?
And I just want to tell you that if you guys think that's right, you guys should be ashamed of yourself.
Hi, my name is Victoria Lynn. I'm a senior at the Wyndham High School. I've already pretty much said everything I felt like I need to say a few weeks ago. So I'm here to finish Pat Patterson's thought. She's the one from Maine Med. So basically, if students don't feel comfortable going to their parents, who would they go to? A vital resource for them is the school library. If these students read these books, this may give them the words and the confidence to talk to their parents and family. This can open up the conversation. And again, to echo what somebody said earlier, accessibility is an issue, even though these books are at the public library, for some people, it's very hard to get them. And just to address something else that happened, this is my thoughts now, not hers, just to be clear. The library catalog is on the website, and I know it's really hard to like sift through all of that. I have a friend, she wanted me, she can't be here today, she wanted me to recommend Common Sense Media. That's a great resource for people who don't have the time to like read every book. So that's all I have to say. Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any final public comment?
Super nervous, definitely not prepared to do this. I just want to thank you guys all so much. I can't imagine
If you could say your name and
Oh, I'm sorry. Kate Deleski. I live in Wyndham. I just want to thank you all so much for being up here. I can't imagine what these last few weeks and months have been like for you guys. I can't imagine, you know, the emails that you're receiving and the hatefulness that is being spewed at you, and I'm really sorry for that. You know, when this gentleman just came up, and I know I'm not addressing him specifically, but just, you know, the idea of other children being scared to speak out, I'm scared to speak out right now because I'm an adult. Like, the, if people are trying to protect our children, then there's kind ways to do that, right? There's thoughtful ways to do that. And I also want to say that I'm a Christian, and that as a Christian, I think that we're supposed to love and care about everybody and not spew hate. That's kind of the point of being a Christian, right? Is to be loving and caring of all people. I think that the gentleman that came up before had a really good idea about maybe letting us know what books, you know, our kids are checking out. I don't know if that would be helpful to people so that then they could, you know, talk to their kids about those books. But there's also the idea of maybe just like looking in your kid's book bag and seeing what book they're reading, and then you could talk to them about it over the dinner table too, because it is our responsibility as parents to know what our kids are reading. Finally, I just want to mention that the first thing that was read here, I've not been to one of these meetings before, was, yeah, really disturbing, really hard to listen to. It sounded to me like it was about a rape, and the idea that by our kids not reading about rape or going to prevent them from being raped is kind of crazy. That's not an appropriate word. That's a mean word to use, not crazy, but just not really thinking it through, right? I mean, is kind of, that's going to happen to some of our kids, right? So them understanding that's happened to someone else makes them feel safe, right? Just like these other kids are saying. You know, if there's a kid that has been sexually assaulted or has been a victim of incest, knowing that there's other people who have experienced those same things makes them feel safe, you know? And yeah, that's just what that made me think of. Thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Anybody else?
My name is Ken Anderson. I'm from Wyndham. God has given each one of us an opportunity to grow in His grace. When any of us speak grace into someone's life, it does not come from what we supply. Grace is first God's, and though we all receive it or reject it, that is our choice. But either way, we first get it from God. The position any of us choose, no matter what we decide, is entirely based and founded because of the undeserved favor from God. That is grace. I have to speak to a point of reference from a prior speaker a few weeks ago. He cited some scripture from the Bible. And though I agree with his assessment of the scripture, the speaker failed to understand the entirety of Jesus's message. The message is this, "Love your neighbor as yourself." The context in which Jesus is speaking, the only way to love your neighbor is to first know that you are loved. The only way to know that you are loved is to look at your meaning and purpose of your existence. It is much deeper than saying, "Love is love." Love has a starting point, a genesis, a beginning. Love only comes first from God. He is the author of it. His love is perfect, unchanging. And I need to say, God's love does come with conditions. It is not arbitrary. God's love is transcendent. God's love is transcendent, ours is not. Our love for one another wanes. It has weak moments, doubtful moments, and moments of grandeur. Once any of us receives the love of God, it's first based on Him forgiving us. Love is perfect, but we are not. God is love, and He wants us to run to Him, and not away from Him. The way in which we can begin to understand God's love is only through regeneration or being born again. He must replace our heart of stone with a soft heart. So to love your neighbor is to share with them the love that is God. Yes, build a relationship with that neighbor, and yes, do not judge them harshly or in a shrewd manner. But share the love of God by showing them the love letter, the Holy Bible. Explain it to them, the radical condition known as sin, that everyone has. But be ready to give an account of the hope that is in you. Study, be enthralled, enveloped, engrossed in the things of God. And only then will we know how to love as God loves. Love is not lying or condoning behavior that grows into self-destruction. Thank you.
Thank you. Any final... Okay.
Hi, my name is Elizabeth Moran. I'm a parent and a teacher here in Wyndham. And I just wanted to also make the note that that first excerpt that was read, the very first reading, was about a rape. It was from the book Lucky by Alice Sebold. And it's a memoir, and that was a true story of her as a freshman on the campus of Syracuse University. I remember when that book first came out, I read it, and I, it changed my behavior. So it was incredibly educational, because I was walking home from the library in the dark at my college, and I stopped doing that. So, these books have a purpose. So, please don't think about just ripping them off the shelves. I think that the process of going through and making sure you read it in their entirety is very important. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Julie Anderson. I did not plan on speaking tonight, but I'm just feeling really led to say something here.
Julie, what town are you from?
I'm from Leamington. I actually am a school board member at Bonnie Eagle, and you guys have heard that just this Monday night, we had a bunch of people that got up and read a bunch of really inappropriate books in our school district. And I'm really proud that the board made the right decision to simply pull the books off the shelf for the time being. All they had, all we did was suspended policy IJJ for the time being, so the superintendent could review the books that were read that particular evening, on Monday evening. So now it's in the hands of the superintendent, with guidance potentially from staff, or whoever, to come back to the board and then give us his opinion. So, no harm's been done by pulling inappropriate books off the shelf. And what I said on Monday was, many of these books are considered young adult books. A young adult is between the ages of 18 to 26. By science, by stages of development, the students in your schools are adolescents. Adolescents, not young adults. And so, writers and librarians, it's a construct to call adolescents young adults. Their minds are not able to take in what potentially could do harm to them, induce trauma upon them. The surveys that come through our schools are, the questions that are being asked of these students, they're not prepared sometimes for it, and parents don't always see the emails that come through to opt them out. So, I'm just here to charge you all. You're responsible to make sure every single student here is safe. Every single student. And "safe" means something to one person and another, I guess, but it's important that these kids here all feel safe. And providing them with this type of content is not safe. And I will say, when we were going through our own book appeals last fall for Gender Queer, and it's perfectly normal, which are still on our shelves, I remember Drummond and Woodson, the attorneys that basically control the state and the school districts, told us that students' rights, the only thing that he told us, Peter Fundley, was that he brought up PICO versus Education, a Supreme Court case, and he said that basically the students' rights pretty much trump all. But they forgot to tell us, and I believe that it was derelict of his duty to tell us, that if a book was considered pervasively vulgar or uneducationally suitable, that the board had every right to...
Thank you, ma'am, I appreciate your comments. We have a student coming down. If you wouldn't mind pausing just for a minute.
Hi, my name is Beckett. I'm a 7th grader at Wyndham Middle School. The books should stay in the library. It's not like anyone's forcing them to read them. It's everyone's individual choice. They're not in our curriculum, the classrooms, people are not forced to read them. And everyone has phones, or iPads, or anything, and they can easily access pornography on their phones. And, yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Adams Ajaxak, Wyndham. So, I'd actually, I know I've been addressing you guys for months now about these books, so I'm going to address the actual people that are listening to this on TV, because I can't look at the audience. So, I don't go back and forth with emails with you guys, because I'm not that type of guy, but I am one to start a movement around me and get people amped up. And I will let everybody know here that until you guys make a decision to pull these books, I'm going to get as many parents as I can to take up as much time as possible on this microphone as needed. So you guys can stay here late into the nights to have to listen to all these pornos being read to you, because it is disgusting that you won't make moves. So, I went to Bonnie Eagle on Monday, talked to them, and just pleaded with them, like the first time that I talked to you guys. And guess what? They immediately removed the books off the shelves until they were reviewed. Like I said to you, Kate, it takes like four months to remove a book. It has taken forever for you guys to get through Gender Queer. Where does Nick and Charlie's review? Where are all these other book reviews that are taking place, that we keep bringing books up to you guys? What is the problem here? Why are we moving so slow? So, the next thing I'd like to say is, there's definitely an agenda being pushed on to our kids, and the payroll that you guys have for teachers sucks. It's terrible. So you're either getting really passionate teachers that don't care about salaries, or you're getting weirdos that have sexual fantasies about our kids. Because there's only two reasons that you're here as teachers that want to teach our kids. And I only have a problem with one of them. And guess what? Bonnie Eagle just had an issue with it last week. They raped a 15-year-old boy and sent inappropriate pictures to three others. So, I'm not out of line when I'm saying this, that there are many sick, perverted people, some of them might be on the board right now, Chris, that have issues with liking little boys and girls. So, I just want everybody to be aware of why we're here. It's not just the books, it's the agendas that are unfolding onto our children and the schools that you guys are pushing, all right? There's no reason that you guys should be sexualizing children in kindergarten, or preschool, or any other schools in RSU 14. This is ridiculous, and it's not going to stop. We're going to keep on showing up until you guys make the right decision. So, Jenny, I'd really love to flick you the bird, but I'm above that.
Thank you so much. Your time is over. Your time is over.
You're classy. You stay classy.
Hi, Steve Adams, I'm a resident, and I'm a, all of you know I'm a teacher here. So I just want to say, I wasn't going to speak, but I just wanted to say that I think the insinuation that, like, I think the first part about really dedicated staff is very important, like, that is what you're seeing. I think the insinuation that we're up to anything nefarious is, I can't say what I really want to say, but I think it's laughable coming from people propping up a registered sex offender that was brought here to speak to you and saying that we think we're up to something nefarious. So I just want to point that out. Also, so I wanted to say something else entirely before I came up here, so I want to try to change gears and get the emotion out of it. I just want to say, I've been listening to the budget conversations, and I want to really commend Chris and Christine and the A-Team for what they've come up with the budget. It was fascinating for me to hear that we were like, we have a lot of needs, and we were able to incorporate a lot of things that we need to do right by our students in the budget. And we came in at the lowest percentage increase in the state, blew my mind. And I just know, listening to all these people, and what they, and all these administrators, and what they were saying that our students need for support, you can feel that in the buildings. It's needed. And I just want to, like, keep that in the back of your minds when we have these conversations, that it's commendable what they have done, and what they've put together, and it's taken a lot of work. And the stuff that they listed is stuff that we need, and I just want to make sure that gets across. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, it's Nicole. Nicole Barney from Wyndham. I just wanted to read a little thing from the Portland Press-Herald article in regards to a Westbrook bookstore removing books from their shelves. It says, this is a quote from the owner, "There have been some people who think we are banning books, and to that I say it is our choice not to carry the products," she said. "It is not the same as a book being banned. We have a safe space commitment, and that extends to our shelves." However, this woman who said this quote, who owned this bookstore, her spouse came and spoke here, and he was all for keeping these books in the library. So, that just kind of blew my mind, that he came here and spoke about the First Amendment and keeping these in, and said laws, and blah, 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 blah. Yet, him and his spouse removed books from their own library. This particular person is the one that Ms. Butler went up and had a private conversation with in front of me. So I find it kind of ironic and funny that she had this conversation with the gentleman who, they removed the books from their stores, yet came here and spoke, and she was so grateful for him that he came and spoke, and had quite the conversation in front of me. Also in this, she says, "There are plenty of authors," because they remove books due to authors, "who aren't sexually assaulting and sexually harassing people. So we make space for them by removing the ones who are." So, same with our books. There are plenty of books out there that don't have sexually explicit, sexually explicit images and details in them. I just am so sick of coming here, honestly. I just want to know, like, where does this go? Are we just going to continue to come here, week after week after week after week, and bitch to you guys about removing the stuff in here, and then just go through the IJJ process? Are you guys going to actually do something morally correct and remove all of these books? I just don't understand. And I am just, you, you're just, I'm just so pissed off at you, because the conversation that I heard with the gentleman that removed the books, like, you were, you said, "I would go up to anybody and speak with them." I have been to numerous school board meetings, and I have not once seen you approach a single person in the audience besides that gentleman, who you were so, so grateful for coming, when he removed the books from his library. So, I don't know. I'm just so sick of coming here. I want you guys to actually do something about this. All right. Peace out.
Thank you.
My name is Riley Russell. I'm a senior here at Wyndham High School. We're not actually being taught this in the classroom. Nobody is forcing your kid to check out these books. Like, if they want to check out the books, so be it. Like, we're not even being forced to go into the library and read these books. I haven't been to the library since I was a freshman. Like, seriously. Like, we're not reading these books in the classroom, we're not being taught anything. If your kid wants to go check out a book, do it. Your kids have cell phones, they have iPads, they have the internet. I can tell you right now that they're looking up way worse stuff on the internet than they're reading in a book in a high school. Like, thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Brittany, and I'm from Wyndham. I grew up in Wyndham.
Brittany, your last name, please.
I don't need to give my last name. You said it at the beginning of the speech.
If you're a student.
I don't need, I'm not a student.
Okay.
Hi. Graduated. My teacher, math teacher over there, my old assistant principal right there, and I'm pretty guaranteed that this would not have flown if I had bring these materials into the school myself. And this was shared with everybody. I have had a lot of dry time today to think about what I was going to say, and all these things flowing through my mind. Of course, I'm not going to remember them right now. It's plain and simple, this doesn't belong in school. It doesn't belong in public school. And just like everybody's saying accessibility over at the public library, if you can't make it to the public library, find a friend. Find a ride. Get, talk to your buddies that are all in this community. Hi.
Ladies and gentlemen.
Okay. It doesn't belong in school. Sucking dick, eating pussy, this is an LGBTQ nothing and straight nothing. It doesn't belong, it's not appropriate. And it's not about, it's not, we are here for the students. It's not, "I care only about my son and myself." It is, they're all about the students, and we don't want it in their possession. It doesn't matter if it's being handed out or not, it's accessible to them. It's being talked about. It's mind-blowing that we are here talking about this. Mind-blowing. Pornography! The first 11 fucking pages of that book, you think is appropriate for some fifth grader or sixth grader to pick up and start reading? Are you kidding me? All of you, are you kidding me? Thanks.
Hi, my name is Julie Clifford, and I'm a resident of Wyndham. And I'm really short, so I don't know if you can hear me. But I did feel compelled to come up and just say, the last word I would use to describe my second grade's teacher, second graders teacher, is a weirdo. She's not a weirdo, she's lovely. She has great communication with me and my husband, she's actually a first-year teacher. I was so nervous about having her for our son. She has seen through his 504 plan like you wouldn't even believe, she is relentlessly pursuing his education. And to hear parents talk about our staff this way breaks my heart, because I see firsthand what these teachers are doing. And my son, his test scores for I Ready Reading went up 60 points for one, like, semester, and his math went up 20 points. Like, he, his teachers are doing the work with him, and I'm so proud of her. And I just wanted to come up here and say that she knows who she is, and I just wanted to commend her for her hard work, and let her know that by no means do I think that she is a weirdo. Thank you.
Thank you. Any final comments this evening for public comment? I don't see any movement. You've already had a turn, sir.
I just need to...
I'm sorry.
Why are you not answering my emails? Respectfully, Kate.
You have your turn. I think it's time to end public comment.
I just respectfully...
You've had your time, you've three minutes.
Why are you not answering my emails?
Thank you very much. We're going to go in a recess, and then we'll come back to our regularly scheduled meeting.